Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, attending. This is a June 5, 2018 special board meeting. We have several items on the agenda. The first one being a public hearing regarding the increased -- increasing the Kentucky River Authority water withdrawal fee.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Would you mind if we switched the order of the agenda to place number four above number three, so these people don't have to sit here through our discussions?
Um, well, we actually put it on in this order so that people who maybe have day jobs and want to get something to eat and then come, so they know what the agenda is and they could time their coming here. So I think, and I'm not sure, James, as far as a special meeting and changing the agenda around, I'm not even sure that's legal.
I don't think there's an issue just with changing the order here, but it's up to the chair or the secretary.
Okay. Well, thank you. I guess people are aware that we put it in that order so that they could gauge their timing, so I think if we changed it, it might further cause them problems. And the other two items are, well, earlier items are water items.
All right. And that's why I just thought we could move that one up, so that it would all be together.
I guess I prefer to leave it as it is for those reasons. And I should also introduce myself. I'm Anna Marie Pavlik Rosen, Board Chair. To my right, Walt Baldwin, our Vice Chair, Don Hale, Secretary Treasurer, Ralph Ludwig, Board Member, Stephen Mason, Board Member, and James Liebman, our Attorney. So I'll now turn the meeting over to Walt Baldwin to run the public hearing.
This hearing will come to order. My name is Walt Baldwin. I've been requested by the Board to conduct this hearing. With me today are Board members and staff of the Frankfurt Electric and Water Plant Board. We are here to receive comments regarding an increase to the KRA Tier Two water withdrawal fee and FPB's adjustment factor to 29 cents per 1,000 gallons proposed to be effective July 20, 2018 for water districts and June 20, 2018 for all of the rate classes. This date is subject to change. The public hearing was advertised in accordance with regulations for the public notification and appearance in Sunday, May 27, 2018 edition of the State Journal. To conduct this hearing in an organized fashion, we ask that you register with the Secretary if you wish to speak. This hearing will be conducted informally and voluntarily by the Frankfurt Electric and Water Plant Board in order to accept comments on the above item. Both oral and written comments will be accepted. Any and all persons present who wish to make a statement will be afforded an opportunity to do so. If you have a written statement to accompany your oral presentation, a copy of the written statement should be provided to the Board prior to your presentation. Oral presentation should be limited to no more than three minutes. If necessary, I'll interrupt and request the presentation to be completed due to the time limit. I may ask questions of any person presenting oral comments where it is necessary to clarify the nature or substance of the comment. The Board deserves the right to answer questions at a later date. It's the job of the Board to fairly consider various points of view and information. We want public input and involvement, and I hope you do not find our standard procedures restrictive. Additional oral comments and written comments can be accepted and considered if they are submitted no later than the end of normal business hours on Monday, June 18, 2018. To submit a comment, please contact FPB at (352) 4372 or on our website, www.fpb.cc. Before we open the floor for comments, Mr. Price will provide a summary of the details.
Thank you. The KRAB is imposed upon all agencies that withdraw water from the Kentucky River that use the river as a water source. This fee is passed on by these agencies to their rate payers. The KRA is empowered by statute to set these fees to maintain the locks and the dams that enable the use of the river as a viable water source. I understand that Mr. Graves and Mr. Hamilton are with us tonight to make some comments, so I will turn it over to these gentlemen. Thank you.
Can anybody hear me? If you hear the mic, someone can keep you here.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Jerry Graves, Executive Director with Kentucky River Authority. I'm here today to try to answer questions about what we do, how we do it, and why we do it. The number one concern for the Kentucky River Authority is we're in charge of the river as far as water retention. That's what we're in business for. We make sure that 750,000 people get water supply from Beattyville to Carrollton. We maintain 14 locks and dams plus a park. Right now, I'm a staff of two. And David's leaving at the end of June to go to another position, so I'm going to be a staff of one plus lock master. So we're a small organization. Statistically, we can raise rates, and which we did. The reason we raised the rates from this past time to 22 cents per 1,000 gallons is for the structure at Boonsborough Lock and Dam 10. Actually, we're going to build a new dam, not a lock there. It's the largest construction project we've had. Y'all bear with me, I've got a bad back. It's the largest construction problem we've -- project we've taken since I've been with Kentucky River Authority or the Kentucky River Authority's taken on. It's a $28 million project. It's for the water retention for City Winchester. If you've been to Lock 10, you'll see that the City Winchester's water supply is held back by four steel gates that were placed in 1905 and about 200 tons of sand. This rate fee will help pay the debt service for that dam. Our fees, we're totally supported by, not totally, we get $240,000 a year general funds from the state. That's for our operational capacity, pay rent, some salaries, gasoline to mow, maintenance on our equipment, et cetera. Our debt service is $535,000 per quarter. So this is how we pay our debt service. As we speak right now, we had debt service on a new dam at nine, a new dam at eight. There's a new dam at three, and that was paid for by the General Assembly some time ago. I'm not real sure, David, 2003, eight, nine, something like that. The debt service for nine is probably 50% paid for. The debt service at eight is probably three years in the making, there's another 17 to go. And we just started the project at 10. They just started this about three weeks ago. This project will be about a four-year project. I'm just, I'm opening the floor for questions now. We're basically the only entity that can do this. The Corps of Engineers is basically gone. The Commonwealth is, I'm not going to say broke, but strapped. We are set up to do this. And the rate fees is determined by the Office of Financial Management and Finance Cabinet, which means that they set the rates. We could go through a process of selecting a contractor. We put it on the street. First of all, let me back up. We have a consultant to determine the need of the facility. Second thing, we have a consultant to design the facility. Then we have to go through the bonding process to see how much money we can bond. And that process is given to us by OFM. This is how much money that you can bond, this is how much the rate increase is going to be. So the Kentucky River Authority doesn't actually set the rate fee. It's the Office of Financial Management. Any other questions or concerns?
I had a question. You have a board with a number of representatives, and they come from each of the counties that border the Kentucky River, or?
We have 12 board members, two. One's the Secretary of Finance, the other's the Secretary of Energy. We have to have a person of water quality. He has to be an expert in water quality. A county judge, a mayor, somebody from the middle north of South Fork, a engineer, and five people from respective area adjacent to the river basin. So it's a 12-member board.
And I believe that when it first started, it was concerned mainly with watershed protection.
Right. That's our main concern, is water retention.
Watershed protection, that to protect the watershed quality, the water quality in the river system?
I think originally it was, I think the drought brought about the fact that the water retention, you could be correct on that also. But we have multiple facets we do. We also, for recreational purposes, also.
Okay.
Do you have some history, when it was taken over by the Corps? What state the locks were in? How many you've got in repair? How many you have left? That type of thing?
The Corps left, I think, in 2002. We went through a renovation of locks one, two, three, and four, and that took place, this is the fourth, third?
Third year.
Third full year that we've had one, two, three, and four operational. Last year, we had 6,000 people go through the locks.
Is that 6,000 boats or actual people?
That's actual people, boats. I think we had something like 1,100 boats, maybe 1,200 lockages. And a lockage means the gates swung open, swung back. And really, it was a bad river year. The water was up and down like a yoyo. The year before that, we had higher numbers.
So how many locks do you have left to do? How many dams do you have left to repair before the systems?
Good question. As needed, be honest with you, they're all at some point going to need it. But I would think probably the next one would be 11. Would you agree with that, David?
Yeah.
Which is the water supply for the City of Richmond. And I'd say that we'll probably be coming back and looking at Frankfurt. This is somewhere down the road. This right here will probably, it's not going to solve the problem, but it's going to get us in pretty good shape as far as being proactive. Without us, we're the only game in town.
Yeah.
You know?
Do we have any sense of what the total, I mean, when the Corps handed them over to us, do we have any sense of what the total liability was for repairing these dams and getting them back up to operational state?
It was about $10 million.
I guess where I'm going is?
Yeah, $10 million.
Is trying to have some sense of what liability's still out there that might drive future rate increases to that Tier Two.
You know, I can't sit here and tell you there's not going to be future rate increases, but I think it's sometime down the road. I don't think the next couple of years. I think it's further on down the road. But if we have failure, and I was telling your Board Chairman the other day, you know, Winchester is backed up, like I said, with four steel gates put in 1905, about 2,400 tons of sand. If we lose that lock and, or if we lose that dam, Winchester's dry. Same thing if we lose lock four, our dam four. Frankfurt's in trouble, and we're the only game in town. We do have emergency management plan, backup plan, if something were to fail.
So you mentioned that you get some, you get an allocation of 250, I think, or 240 from the general fund?
Right.
Does that all go to Tier One?
Yes. That pays for administrative costs. That pays for maybe two lock masters, gasoline for mowing. We mow about 100 acres.
Is there any expectation the general fund might, or are there other revenue sources that might contribute to those Tier Two costs in the future?
I don't see it.
You don't see that, no?
I don't see that.
I guess my last question is, when are your regular meetings? We wanted to send somebody and have them try to keep us better.
We meet February, May, September, and November, usually about the second Monday of the month. That's not given. Those months are chiseled and stoned.
Also, there's not a regular?
No. We've got 12 board members, and it's pretty hard to get 12 people all on one date.
So is that scheduled, posted somewhere, or we could?
Yeah, well, I think it's on our website.
On our webpage.
Okay. And that's under finance? That's a finance website?
Yeah. It's this way of Google. It's a six-inch-long web address.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you Google Kentucky River Authority, it'll come up.
Yes, sir.
What are your source of funds again? You said withdrawal fees, right?
Right.
Other sources, general funds?
That's it.
Those two are the ones.
That's it.
You don't get any funds from recreational?
No, sir.
Use of the river?
Mm-mm.
Is there ever been looked at to try to?
We've looked at it, and it probably would be so minute, it'd be worth, I don't think it'd be worth the trouble to handle the money.
But that's where most of the traffic is, is recreational boats.
Right, right.
To clarify on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Has there ever been any discussion at all to get contributions from the cities whose?
Not that I know of.
Get the?
No, ma'am, not that I know of.
The cause of you that the cities?
We're, the Kentucky River Authority is very unique in the fact that we're basically a business, and we're probably one of the few businesses that around state government actually stays with their head above water, so to speak. I'm very proud of what we do and how we do it. Like I said, two of us, and I've got four full-time lock masters and three temps. And there's nothing like a Friday after, or Friday morning, and you've got 10 boats coming up and two guys calling sick. Oops. You're now looking at two lock masters. You know, we've had to do that. So we've got our hands full. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
And there's no source of federal funds, I mean, of any?
The Corps left us, they couldn't wait to get out of town. You know, they're gone. In fact?
Not that they're out of town, is there still?
No, no, there's nothing. The Corps is basically, they had one project, and I won't mention that project, but it almost broke the bank.
So I guess along that lines, it reminded me, the Corps left because there was no longer commercial traffic on the river?
Exactly.
If there started being commercial traffic, would there then be a pull for, to draw the Corps?
That would open up a different can of worms, because those barges used to travel 24/7. Then you'd have to maintain four locks 24/7. It'd be?
Would that change the Corps' responsibility to provide funding, or that?
I don't think so. They're done. They're gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you both for attending our meeting.
This is a secret of the sun.
Oh, so.
So it looks like we have two folks that wanted to comment on the rate increase. Kathy Warren? Just step to the mic, say your name.
My name is Kathy Warren. I live at 305 Utral, and I'm a Frankfurt Plant Board customer. I hear what you all are saying, but I'm going to speak against any type of water increase right now. I think that everybody wants a piece of the pie right now. We're all in sad shape here in Frankfurt. Different entities are now hitting us up because of insurance costs and the locks and dam situation. And I just think there's going to be a stopping point at one point for the citizens of Frankfurt. Everybody's going to have to take some licks and maybe have to try to find some sources, other sources, and tap into the Frankfurt Plant Board to get water fees for the River Authority. Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess we've got one more. Steve Memes?
Yeah, Steve Memes. My background is in aquaculture, retired from University of Kentucky, or Kentucky State University. So efficient use of water is important to me, but one thing I wanted to do is kind of think outside the box. So it's a little bit away from the subject, but I just wanted to bring it up, is that, you know, we're pulling water from the river, we clean it up, it's used, it's then put back through a wastewater treatment plant, it's cleaned up again, and then dumped back into the river. We're looking at about 3.5 million gallons of water on an annual basis as being, per day, I should say, 3.5 million gallons per day that's being cleaned up by the wastewater treatment plant, put back into the Kentucky River so somebody downstream can pick it back up. Just wanted to bring it before the Board, maybe a, some sort of analysis that could be looked at, where we could recycle that water and reuse that water at a far less cost. This is being done in the southwest part of the United States where there's a water shortage. We don't have a water shortage, but maybe a more efficient way of treating our water. And so it'd be a matter of looking at the cost of taking that water and reprocessing it enough to be able to drink it. So it's just, just an idea to try to bring down costs. Also, I just was, originally, I understand the need to increase the cost just because of all the costs, but I was wondering, with that 3.5 million gallons that goes back to the river, how much are we drawing out per day? The city, or the, how much do we draw out here at the Water Board?
We average about seven and a half to eight.
So only about a half goes back to the river? Do we get any credit for that, any water that's going back to the river?
Unfortunately, because I was talking with Steve earlier, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, that all of their bonding for their dam replacement is funded by Tier Two fees, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So getting to your point, the water users, the people that withdraw water from the river, they're paying 100% for the repair or replacement of the thing?
I see.
We're not the only users of the river. So they have a tough job, and I take my hat off to their job that they do, and the staff that they do. I would like to see them to find more funding.
Yeah, that's, that'd be nice.
I'm not being critical at all.
Yeah. And I'm not trying to be either. I was just saying, you know, we do return about half the water back in a much better condition back to the river. Is there any way here in Frankfurt, we should start looking at how can we reuse that water that's 80, 90% ready to drink, basically, with just further refinement to the water? And this is something that's going on throughout the United States, especially in water shortages areas. So I just wanted to give a little input to that.
Thanks. And actually, that made me think of another question. I mean, has it ever been considered having intake fees as well? I mean, the stormwater and everything that's going back in the river is also a use of the water channel.
There are a few instances where, there's a few instances where the municipality may have a reservoir or something, they'll pump into that reservoir, and then they'll, from the river to the reservoir, then they'll pump from the reservoir to their treatment plant. So there is credits there. So it's kind of a similar situation, but we don't have any situation currently where there's credits for return, return flow.
It wasn't much credit, it's more of, say, you had an industrial customer that was putting a lot of water back into the watershed. Is there a downstream cost for those consumers of the water later on to clean up some of that? And should, are there, is there any thoughts about the fees for introducing water into the system?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have anything like that currently.
We don't have any, the last, please, Kentucky, don't, rather the last, do that for you.
Yeah, on the main stem, it's all water utilities. There are a couple quarries, but a pretty small amount of usage. They're probably paying hundreds of dollars or $1,000 per quarter. So it's pretty small. It's 99% water utilities.
Thanks.
If you don't mind, I think Sally had a question.
Do the distilleries use the water?
Yeah, so the one distillery here in town pays us a water fee. They're the only one.
But don't we have some other distilleries along the river?
Yeah, it depends if they use, if they're not drawing out directly from the Kentucky River, they don't pay the Tier Two fee. Now, if they do withdraw water from their own source, they would still pay the Tier One, so if they're using, but some of them would be using, if they're using on city water, that's our, they're paying it to the Frankfurt Plant Board or whoever, yeah.
But if they're, if they're drawing it out at the tributaries?
But if, yeah, if they're withdrawing it, if they are withdrawing it out of the tributaries, they pay a smaller fee, which is just 2.2 cents per 1,000, and that's, that funds mainly the general operations of the KRA.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? If there's no more questions, that'll bring to close our public hearing. And we are on to, to the two, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
You want to announce that one, or just go on, take off?
We'll now move on to item number two, conduct a public hearing regarding proposed water rate increase effective August 1, 2018.
This hearing will come to order. Excuse me for reading the same thing again. My name is Walt Baldwin. I've been requested by the Board to conduct this hearing. With me today are Board members and staff of the Franklin, of the Frankfurt Electric Water Plant Board. We are here to receive comments regarding proposed rate increase effective August 1, 2018. This public hearing was advertised in accordance with the regulation for public notification and appeared in the Sunday, May 27, 2018 edition of the State Journal newspaper. To conduct this hearing in an organized fashion, we ask that you register with the Secretary if you wish to speak. This hearing will be conducted informally and voluntarily by the Frankfurt Electric and Water Plant Board in order to accept comments on the above item. Both oral and written comments will be accepted. Any and all persons present who wish to make a statement will be afforded an opportunity to do so. If you have a written statement to accompany your oral presentation, a copy of the written statement should be provided to the Board prior to your presentation. Oral presentation should be limited to no more than three minutes. If necessary, I will interrupt and request the presentation to be completed due to this time limit. I may ask questions of any person presenting oral comments where it is necessary to clarify the nature or substance of the comments. The Board deserves the right to answer questions at a later date. It's the job of the Board to fairly consider various points of view and information. We want the public input and involvement, and I hope you do not find our standard procedures restrictive. Additional oral comments and written comments will be accepted and considered if they are submitted no later than the end of normal business hours on Monday, June 18, 2018. To submit a comment, please contact FPB at (352) 4372 or on our website, www.fpb.cc. Before we open the floor for comments, Mr. Billings will provide a summary of the details.
Last month, we asked the Board to have the public hearing. That's what we're doing here tonight. That's based on a cost of service study that was done several years ago. That cost of service study indicated that our revenue requirements were falling short. We looked at a five-year incremental plan to raise rates. That was requested from some previous people in the past. They would rather see us have smaller annual rate increases opposed to a large rate increase. So we followed through with that. This rate increase, it would be the third in a series of five. This rate increase means a dollar and 90 cent increase to a typical 4,000-gallon residential customer, and it would mean 70 cents to a typical 4,000-residential county customer. So still for about a dollar a day, a dollar every day for $30 a month, thereabouts, we're putting 4,000 gallons of water on a monthly basis into people's homes. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does this affect what we're going to be paying on the sewer fees?
No, sir.
So even though the water rates will increase, we won't see automatically an increase? Because usually it's, you know?
Well, they have rate increases too, and they're set by a different entity. How that works is that entity uses our billing determinants, our gallons, and they charge their own rate.
Just based on gallons, not?
Correct.
And what are the, what are the increase in treating water here in Frankfurt? What is it that's causing this increase? Is it salaries, mostly people, equipment?
Buildings and buildings.
A lot of it was our debt service.
Billing you.
Ma'am?
Debt service?
Mm-hmm. But a lot of things went into, a lot of things went into it. Included in these rate increases is a 7-million-gallon reservoir at a cost of $4 million. Also included is the admin building. Also included was the?
New facility.
New facility, that admin building.
Let me just say something to the people that are here. This is a public hearing. You can register to speak, and you certainly be allowed to speak, but we're not going to have just an open shouting match, please.
Also included in the study was the generator that we put in at the water treatment plant, and also in the study was changes to the retirement system that we're known at the time, and a reduction in sales that we and the industry as a whole have seen for the past several years. So all that goes into the study.
Reduction in sales of water, is that?
Yes.
Ma'am? Is there?
I've just been here.
Please register to speak if you wish to speak.
Where do I register?
With Ms. Poe right there. Oh, where's Mr. Baldwin?
Am I not speaking?
If it's okay with James, I think as long as we can keep it orderly, and it's okay with David, is that okay with you, to have a little short Q and A back and forth? As long as we can let one person speak, wait till you're recognized, and have an orderly conversation, I think.
And I may have to defer some of the questions to the most corporate person.
That's, that's fine.
I understand you're based on sales of water in order to recover costs and paper. The thing that's frustrating? The thing that's frustrating as a home user is that I try to save water. So I put in, you know, smaller use of, to load use and, you know, you try to use water as conservative as I can. And yet my rate seems to keep going up even though I'm using less water over, you know, a period of 10 years, let's say. I'm just venting, I guess, more than anything. It seems like every time I'm trying to save, then it gets jumped up again.
It's ironic. There is a catch 22, you know? We develop
The amount of use of water that we use here to make it, you know what I'm saying? Is it better for me to use more water so my rates don't keep going up?
It is.
Yeah, what would that be perhaps?
It is. Here's the thing, you know, we've got an 18 million gallon per day treatment plant that's been bought and paid for by our rate payers for a long time. We're using on average about 50% of that capacity. So if we could increase sales, then that would go further to help in keep rates down. But due to conservation, due to water-saving devices, due to the industry as a whole, those sales are slightly tapering off.
What's the 9 million?
Our average is about 8 million gallons. So, you know, we have a water treatment plant that's capable of producing twice as much water.
Which is future growth.
But we got to have enough capacity for peak, right? So if we could utilize and sell more water, we could help keep rates lower. That's up to a point, we wouldn't want to get up to a point where we have to do a rate increase and have more debt to take care of. You know, that being said, we're trying to do everything that we can to keep, you know, affordable rates. And that's the reason I keep talking about a dollar a day. And if you think, if you think about the fact that you don't have to get in your car and drive across town to get a bottled water, you know, for a dollar a day, just about, we're putting 4,000 gallons of water into everybody's homes. So.
Thanks, Dave.
Would you mind speaking into the speaker? We can't hear you back here.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add one other thing on that is that if you look at your water bill over the 10-year period, there has been inflation. So that is another factor.
Unless you have something else to add, I think we'll move on to audience comments. And Ms. Warren?
I just want to stay right here. I'm satisfied with what David had to say. Thank you, David.
Teresa Walton.
I'm Teresa Walton. I live on Powhatan. And I have been a longtime customer. And when I first read it in the paper with a minimum increase, I thought, oh, that's gonna, that's pretty cool. And then it dawned on me, well, if they're going to increase the minimum from 2,000 to 4,000, they're going to increase the cost of using the 4,000. Doubling it. And I know you should never assume, but I assume that that minimum will also increase. And I feel like the sewer base is based on the water usage and it will take a healthy increase from the consumers. And I think that this is going to have the biggest impact on senior citizens, which I'm one, single, which I am one, and the poor, which I can't really qualify myself quite poor yet. I'm working on it if I'm going to have to pay $30 more a month for my water that I don't use. I seldom use 2,000 a month. And yet I'm going to be paying more for not using it. And I try to be responsible and, you know, not always turn the faucet off when I brush my teeth and then turn it back on, that sort of thing, saving water. And it's just, what they're doing will be encouraging people to use more money because of course, you're paying for it. So if I'm paying for it, why shouldn't I use it? And then the other thing that I've noticed over the years, it took me a long time to notice it, but every year at least, there has, it didn't happen to begin with, it just appeared, I don't know, five, maybe eight years ago, a meter charge. And it started out that the meter that you've had on your home, my meter's been there, I think, since it was built in the 60s. I'm paying $5 a month for the privilege of using that meter. And then it went up to $6. And then it went up again and now it's $8 and 30 some cents a month for the meter. And I think, you know, that's kind of a clever way to raise rates without a public hearing.
Thank you. Steve Mills?
Well, once again, I'm always looking at better ways of saving water, but this doesn't seem to be the problem. The problem is you have certain sales you have to make in order to pay for people and equipment, is that right? So by having a better way, a more efficient way, it's not really going to save water use or anything.
I guess the best way to explain it is 90% of our costs are fixed costs. So the less water we sell due to conservation or water-saving devices, the more we have to break to develop the same revenue stream.
Yeah, okay. Well, that makes sense. I guess I would use more water to water my garden, water my grass, but when I have to pay then two times that for sewer, it just seems like to me that, is there any kind of relationship you have between the city and yours to try to work out something? Like in the summertime that we would get 20% more water without paying a sewer fee, you know, because we know
Agricultural meter, right?
No, they don't do that. With the ag meter, it costs you usually, you don't, you don't give us an ag meter, you have to pay for it.
It takes more than two times.
I know, it's about two and a half, I think. And so I'm just saying that I think people, I just know I'll try not to water. I actually store water off my sheds and stuff like that to try to water around, but I would use water. But when I have to pay then two, two and a half times for the sewer and it's not even going into the sewer. And I understand they have costs too and fixed costs and all that. But has any, any kind of relationship and try to develop to try to talk about those issues? And how maybe in the summertime, we could get a break a little bit on water use, you know what I'm saying? Because we'd probably use more water maybe. I don't know. Maybe not. I just, you know, I like to garden and stuff, so I like to water my garden when it's not raining. But, you know, I have to think about if I'm going to spend four or 5,000 gallons and watering my grass and garden and then pay, you know, another $30 for the sewer fee that's not even going there. So anyhow, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you. Sally Stumbo. Did you have some comments, Sally?
Yes, just a couple of comments, please. Ms. Walton basically said pretty much the same thing that I would say. You know, I'm a has-been, I'm a has-been a state employee. I have been a private business owner, have been a city commissioner. And, you know, I have the same problem that Ms. Walton mentioned. And that is, I'm a single person in a single household, have a great big yard, but I looked at my bills, I've never, ever used 4,000 gallons of water in my house. And I don't expect ever to. And yet you want me to pay for 4,000 gallons of water? And I understand, I mean, it looks to me as if our only solution is we're going to have to have a big population growth in Frankfurt and Franklin County so that we can get more people to live here in order to support our plant boards. Is that what we need, board members, you think? I just, I'm not happy about paying it. Of course, I will pay it, I'm sure. And I appreciate the fact that I can probably afford it, but I'm not happy about it. And I think you understand, you need to understand that you need to try to find other sources of revenue. I don't know where you're going to find it, but I suggest you try.
Thank you. Please.
I think I could have done a better job communicating the increase. I think one person thought we were saying that we were raising your rates by $30 a month. No, ma'am, the increase is a dollar and 90 cents a month. Okay.
That is a great big difference, sir.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, yes. And the fourth
We can stand that.
And the 4,000 gallons that I mentioned, the reason I mention that is because that's what the typical home uses. So when I said it's going up, yeah, that's the average, is the 4,000 gallons.
Average bill?
$30 a month.
No, I mean for water and sewers.
Oh, sewers, two and a half times that, so 30 plus 60, 70.
That's how a bill runs over $400.
But, you know, I just wanted to get up and if I could have done a better job clarifying, the increase is a dollar and 90 cents per month to the average 4,000 gallon customer. And it's 70 cents a month to the average county 4,000 gallon residential customer. It's not $30 a month.
What's the logic on charging the county less than the city? They use the same water.
That is a great question. When we did the cost of service study, we looked at all of our customer classes, city, county, residential, commercial, and industrial. And there was a larger disparity between the city and the county customers. And the cost of service study said, you can't justify that, you shouldn't have that disparity. So for over the last 10 or 12 years, we've been bringing those closer together. And my personal, when I got asked that question 10 years ago, I envisioned myself driving down Versailles Road. And you may or may not know this, you go from the city to the county, to the city, to the county again. And I couldn't see one customer on one side of the road paying a different rate than the customer on the other side of the road. So that's the reason we've been bringing the two together.
You need to do it faster. You say we pay a dollar 90 and they pay 90?
No. After, after the increase, after the increase, the typical city customer will pay $31.20. In the county, total, per month, in the county, that will go to $34.96. So the county is paying more, but we're trying to bring those together. We're trying, we're raising both of them, one of them just slightly higher, so we're trying to close the gap.
Can you tell what the actual increase is?
It's a, it's a dollar and 90 cents per
That was the average, is that right?
Yes.
So what, I mean, it's per gallon, right?
No. Depends on what customer class you are. Different customer classes pay different rates.
I have another question. All right. Am I going to be charged for 4,000 whether I use it or not?
No, ma'am.
Well, then what, why, I don't understand, a minimum?
Well, there is no minimum. There's a customer service charge and there's a consumption fee. So we have to have meter readers on staff, we have to have meter trucks, we have to have a billing department, we have to send out bills. We have to have all that back function going on, whether you use a gallon a month or 10,000 gallons a month. So that customer service charge reflects that.
So how much is that increasing?
It is increasing from 8.30 to $9, but that is included in those rates that I gave you. If you use 4,000 gallons of water, are you city or county?
City.
Your bill should go up a dollar and 90 cents.
Per month?
Per month. I just, not 30, I just wanted to clarify.
But can I ask a question?
I could ask, I'm confused as to, I didn't read all this beforehand, I apologize. But, you know, what we're talking about here is rate design.
Yes.
For everybody, there are different kinds of rates in water, and I used to be in the water business. And what we're using is, there's incline rates and reclining rates. And oftentimes, the less you use, the more you pay per gallon than the more you use. And I'm assuming that we're staying with that kind of rate design or not?
We have flat rates, uniform rates. We've had them for years.
What's the minimum bill?
The customer service charge.
Your meter charge or, and it's going to be, is it per thousand or is it 2,000, is our minimum?
No minimum. There's a customer service charge with no consumption tied to it.
So if I use 800 gallons, I get charged X per gallon used and not for 8,000 or 2,000 gallons?
You get charged, your customer service charge, which will be $9 a month, plus 800 gallons.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry.
That was my question.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that, David. Our next speaker, excuse me if I can't quite read this name, Linda Jollet?
Jelbert.
Jelbert, thank you.
I also am a single woman living, and I went on disability in 1997. So as you can, you get a one and a half percent increase every year from social security. The state is not much better. Some years you don't get an increase at all. And so when you get these increases, your cost of living increase from the government, both Kentucky and federal, is nothing. And then you get these increases from the Water Plant Board. Y'all have enough money to build this beautiful new facility. Didn't ask the voters if we thought y'all needed this beautiful new facility. Did you need it? We're paying for it with our water bill and with our sewer bill. It just, I can barely make ends meet. It's all I can do to pay for the new wheelchair that's in my van. I drove a 1992 handicapped van until January. It took me that long to try to save it. Do you know how much a used handicapped van cost? A used one, $40,000. I mean, people, what are you thinking? There are people out there, single people, that just cannot, did you need this new facility and so you could raise our rates? Did you ask the public? Did you ask the public? Did we vote on it so that, so that you could raise our rates and pay for this facility? So that those of us who are handicapped or single and just trying to scrape by could pay for it and then pay the salaries and the meters and all of the other? Does anybody have a comment? Yes, no? You didn't need it. You did need it. It was a must. Help me, somebody say something. I mean, it's not just me. There are a lot of Frankfurt people out there with handicapped who, fortunately, I have two disability incomes coming in. There are people out there with only one social security disability coming in. There are people out there with only one social security disability coming in and losing their homes because of this. And I'm just scraping here, just scraping. And every time I see that sewer bill going up and up and up, I cringe.
I'll clarify one thing, that the Plant Board does not provide sewer service. For me, it is on our bill, but that service is provided by the City Department.
Of course, we're having to put a whole new sewer systems in too, and that's costing.
Well, your comments are all taken, and we certainly, you know, sympathize. I wish there was a simple answer we could give you, but-
But whose decision was it to build this new facility?
We're going to have two more rates since after this.
Oh, I know. That's what scares me, is the two more rates. And then in five or six years, it's going to do it again. Because the cost of living continues to increase and increase and increase. But for those of us who are retired or on disability, the cost of living does not increase. But yet, all of you who make these decisions to increase the water or the sewer, you don't think about those of us who are single, living alone, and on a fixed income that does not increase. We do not have a choice so that eventually we will lose our homes that we worked so hard to get.
Judith Richards?
I've lived in Frankfurt for 45 years, and my biggest outgoing money is to the Frankfurt Plant Board. It's several months, it's been $400, and it's, when I'm lucky, it goes down to $385. And there's three of us. I wash clothes, I don't take in laundry, but I would love to have some money to spend on other things besides water and sewer. I have friends that live in Lexington, Louisville, Anchorage, Carrollton, Richmond, and I talked to them about this. They've never heard of a sewer bill being two and a half times the water bill.
And to clarify James's earlier comment, all of that-
I know, I know that, but you have to take that in consideration.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to have a little money to spend for fun things. You know, I'd like to take a vacation every now and then. And long-term care, and you don't know how many of us are going to be in it, is certainly not cheap, even with long-term care insurance. You know, I don't know if we can even afford to live somewhere, so I guess we'll just have to drop over dead. But I'd like to have a little money to do something else with besides water. And I appreciate the fact that we have clean water, and it's healthy water where other people don't have that, but I just, can't we do something about the sewer? I mean, everybody just turns their head like, oh, well, we don't have any control over it, but we still have to pay it, and we need some relief.
That's true.
I don't mind paying a water bill, but the sewer bill, I mind. And I wouldn't even mind paying a sewer bill if it was reasonable, but it's not.
I would encourage you to take those concerns to the City Commission.
City Commission. We need to go to the City Commission on that. A City Commission, that's not the Plant Board. The sewer-
I know, but somebody needs to do something about it when nobody else, I mean, I have friends all over Kentucky, and nobody's ever heard of this.
If I just say, we've got a commissioner here. It was when I was like, old for almost 20 years.
Everybody must have a whole lot more money than we do, because, you know, I hate to see-
If he don't pay, if he answers that.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Richards?
I'm happy to answer. I'm not happy about it either.
Would you mind going to the podium?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I don't mind. Nobody likes their sewer bill. At one time, we had the highest sewer rates in the state of Kentucky. I think we're now in the top 10, so we're better than we were. There are places in northern Kentucky that are even more expensive. We were unfortunate enough and fortunate enough to be by a river. So this was a mandate from the federal government that said we had to change the way we were doing things. We had to separate the sewers, so we had to separate sanitation from the water, and we had to redo a bunch of stuff. And that decree came from the state and the federal government, and we had a certain amount of time to do it. We got it, I think, in 2008 originally, and we had to like 2023, and we're seeking an extension of 10 years. And so what happened is you had to spend somewhere between $85 million and $125 million. It looks like it's going to cost about $120 million. We had no choice in these things. Where we did have choices were, we maybe could have had things designed cheaper or less expensive and come up with some ways to have done a little bit less costly. I don't know how many millions that would have been, but the thrust of it was, because of the way things were done and the fact that for years, the sewer department was a separate entity, and so they did not, and Ms. Stumbo can talk to this better than I can, but they did not fund a lot of repairs and maintenance and long-term capital improvement. So when the city took it over, because they were in real trouble, they had to increase rates. So what happened was, rather than increasing rates incrementally, such as David talked about, over a long period of time, they had to increase rates dramatically over a period of time. Now, in the last four or five years, that has been much less, so that the rates are going up about 2.5% a year now, where they were going up a whole lot more than that. And so I think it's going to be a lot better going forward for the next 10 or 15 years. And the other thing I would say is what we may have made a mistake on that we have since corrected is we were forcing the existing generation of people, the people in this room, to pay for too much of the cost of a long-term solution. So we have gone out to the bond market and bonded a number of things over 15, 20, and 25 years, so that even though it costs a little bit more, it's spread out over a longer period of time. It's the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues the city faces, and you can call me anytime if you'd like to talk about it.
This bill is higher than any mortgage I have ever paid, and that's true.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. I just don't have a good answer.
Every month, I think, what's it going to be this month? Somebody from the Plant Board called me one time, said, "Ms. Richards, your bill is skyrocketing." And I said, "What else is new?"
Well, I get those calls too. I'm in the apartment business, and sometimes the commodes don't work.
And the last registered speaker we have is Tom Marshall.
To just add one more point to this stuff. We live in this beautiful, old, old city, and when they started replacing the sewers in downtown Frankfurt, they found wooden pipes. And, you know, because the federal government said to us, you have to do this. I mean, I asked 18 years ago, or however long ago it was, how much would it cost us to do this? And it was, Mr. Scap said, 25 million.
Well, the city has money for everything else.
That wouldn't touch it, that wouldn't touch it, you know, I mean, because, look at the inflation in the last 18 years. You know, that 25 million is what now. So I'm just saying that it's not the fault of the Plant Board, period. It is, the sewer cost is coming from the city of Frank, so don't blame the Plant Board for that. Secondly, the reason the city, the reason the city had to do it was because it was mandated to us by the federal government, which is us.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, that still may make me feel a whole lot better.
No, it won't make you feel better, but maybe make you understand it better.
Well, I'm going to make a few comments I think might make David feel a little better anyway. The fact that you're using, the rate design that you are using, which is a flat rate, and it gives me, you know, some relief in the way that we're doing things, because there are communities where the more you use, the less you pay, which I think is inappropriate, that if we don't have a minimum, where you're charged 2,000 whether you use 1,000 or 1,500, that's also a plus in terms of the way these rates are designed, if that's accurate. And, you know, I hate to say it, but we're all getting, various communities are getting stuck with higher meter or service charges, because that's an easy way for utilities to, you know, sweeten the pot a little bit. Because that way, regardless of how much water you're using, you're paying a little more into the kitty. And their argument, the Plant Board's argument would be, that's because of these fixed costs that have to be spread across the entire customer base. Now, you know, in the best of all worlds, I'd like to see some kind of a rate design where the less you use, the less you pay, you know, but the flat rate's going to be about as close as we're going to get in the scenario that we've got these days. I'd like to see some way to reward people who are using less water. I'd like to see some way where there's a reward for the new technology that reduces the amount of water that is used, because there are all kinds of savings that go with that. There's a huge energy component that is part of the water rates that we have to pay. It's not just taking the water out of the river, it's pumping the water and all the other things that have to be done. But I think our water department does a pretty good job, and we're lucky to have a municipal water supplier. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. If there are no more questions that, oh, you have one more? Please.
What is the cost of having the Plant Board put a separate water supply outside so that it doesn't go through the sewer system, so you can water your lawn and not have, pay for the sewage on it?
Would you like to answer?
I mean, I used to water my grass all the time. I had the nicest in my neighborhood, but I can't afford to water my grass anymore.
Let's get you an answer from David, or from Alan, I'm sorry.
We just looked it up on the terrace, $1,324.
For the install.
And you had, I think you had to get permission for-
Let's come back.
It was 13, $1,324 one-time installation fee for the agricultural meter.
Just to have, is that to dig the line and attach it, or is that just to attach-
It's all in, that's the whole thing.
What if I have somebody that will dig the line if you will just put the meter out there?
Well, that's for us to install the meter and the vault and tap the water main, and then if you're going to use something with water, you'd have to have a plumber install like a frost-free hydrant right behind the meter, and you have to have a letter from the Sewer Board saying it's not going to be connected to your house. But the only thing you would have to pay for, other than the $1,324, would be for the frost-free hydrant to direct the premium water out of it.
I'm a little bit hard here, so I believe to understand what he's saying.
Would you like to move to the mic and just summarize it for everybody? Thanks, Alan. Just one second, we'll get this one answered.
Just for a 5/8 agricultural meter, it's $1,324, and that pays for the meter vault, for us to tap the water main and run the copper and set the meter in the meter vault, and that's the actual cost of the manpower and materials to do that. And then if you want a frost-free hydrant, like a yard hydrant, you would have to pay a plumber or someone to install that, but then you actually just pay for the water at that point. You don't pay sewer on any of that water. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's not, I had called at one time, and they said it was like $500 to have the faucet put in, and then after I had the line dug, that they would attach it.
Could have been, we actually did, when did we do that, David?
2014.
Yeah, like 2014, that rate went up because we actually figured the materials, the copper and the brass that we used to install it, so those materials and the labor to install it, and that's the average cost, is 13, and that's the actual cost. Because when it was lower, it was actually being subsidized by other stuff, so we tried to get actual cost.
Thanks, Alan. Can we add one more question?
Well, I just have a comment, and I have one, and I've had it for about eight years, and it cost $500 at that time, because that's how much it's gone up. But, again, I get this, I keep paying for the meter that I already kind of paid for every month, and that has gone up every year, about a dollar a year here in the last three or four years. At first, I wasn't charged at all for it, after I paid $500.
It would seem like the meter would eventually get paid for, that you would eventually own that meter, you're like renting it.
Well, I was told I was fine, and obviously, I didn't buy it.
Well, I think if that's our last comments, we'll wrap up this public meeting. Thanks, everybody, for their comments. They're certainly appreciated.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number three, Board Discussion of the Reed Smith Report and Issues Concerning-
Ma'am, should we take that place? And move your mic closer?
Okay. Okay. Informational item, Board Discussion of the Reed Smith Report and Issues of Concern Involving KYMEA. Kathy had asked to add onto this-
Yeah, it's a, I made it an action item.
Okay.
You've got the option.
Oh, I have the old one.
Yeah, we made it an action item.
I'm sorry, clarify that, it's an action item to discuss the Reed Smith Report. So I'd like to do a little bit of introduction here. First, back in the May board meeting, there was a motion to make the Reed Smith Report public, and I myself did not vote in favor of that. I felt that this would display the flaws that our legal consultants had identified with KYMEA, and that this is a critical time when KYMEA is trying to find other municipals interested in becoming members of KYMEA, so I felt that would be negative. But I do see some advantages at this point, that we can actually have a discussion as a board about the Reed Smith Report, which we were not able to do under open meetings laws, rules. And that it brings out a point that we have a responsibility to our customer to consider risk involved when we change something as important as a power source. And if we don't speak about it, or we don't move towards resolving some of the questions raised by the Reed Smith Report, that we are not really acting and taking our responsibility seriously. So I know that, Don, you had made the motion to make the Reed Smith Report public. Are there some issues you'd like to speak about?
No.
Do any other board members have comments to make about a discussion on the Reed Smith Report?
I might, I had a few, I guess, there's certainly a lot in here. It's clear, you know, Reed Smith spent some time studying these contracts. I guess, in my mind, the big things that stick out of this, there's certainly a ranking of the concerns, but, you know, one of the big things that they highlight are, you know, the discussion around, you know, proper planning and doing an integrated resource plan. There's the discussion around the voting issues and appropriately tying the ability to vote with the financial risk that's assumed by the individual members, and certainly the ethics. And then the last one- And then the last one that really stands out is some of the bigger ones, is the discussion around the willful misconduct and gross neglect discussions. And that's tied to that last one with the list of items in there that are willful misconduct and gross neglect. The biggest one of those that stands out is the excess capacity that we purchased. And that's, there's an additional comment, I don't know how to say it, with one of the question discussions in the back, where we talked about the liability in the event of a breach. Give me two seconds, I'll find that in here. Well, I guess the short of it is, I can't find that question right off the top of my head, but going back through and commenting on those in order, you know, the gross neglect and willful misconduct, Reed Smith points out that even in the event of a default by KYMEA, you know, we're still liable for all of those costs. So even if something structurally is wrong in the contract, or there is something as bad as willful misconduct or gross neglect, and they breach the contract, all of the liability for that contract still falls to us. And that's, you know, been one of the concerns, you know, all along, you know, that, you know, that you've got this agency KYMEA out there that has the ability to assign risk to us, but we don't have, but doesn't have the ability to absorb that risk.
I think those are some good points. I think there are other concerns, say, it's unclear if we want to do something like put in our own solar photovoltaic system to offset some of the transmission costs that we're going to be, have increases in in the future. It's not clear whether we can go ahead with that project. Reed Smith had noted two different ways of interpreting the contract. One that says you can do it with permission, another one that says that would be considered a special project, and you can go ahead. So there are areas that need to be resolved.
And I would agree. And I think, you know, I think to me, the biggest thing that's out there now, you know, a lot of this is done, we are where we are, but we've got, you know, these large power purchases coming up for 2022, and those RFPs are in front of us now, and those purchases are in front of us now. And, you know, I think it's really important that we get, the IRP thing out of this really stands out to me. You know, we've had, you know, conflicting responses about, you know, why an IRP wasn't performed from, you know, either one was performed, or one wasn't performed, and we weren't able to because the Model Procurement Code precludes it. But, you know, we clearly see other municipals, OMU and Henderson doing IRPs. And then, you know, the other comment we've heard about IRPs is that they weren't indicated because we had no resources to integrate. Which, leaving all that aside, you know, IRPs are, you know, a widely adopted form of utility energy planning across the United States. They're required. In Kentucky, we have, you know, rules in the state that prescribe that any co-op or any IOU to purchase or sell or do any of these types of activities that we're doing is required to perform an IRP and to demonstrate in the IRP that they've done an exhaustive effort to demonstrate that they've done that level of planning. And, you know, we can see in the responses, you know, from Reed Smith and the responses from E3, the perils of not doing an appropriate IRP. You know, we've learned through this process that, you know, we've purchased too much power, and the power that we purchased was too expensive. And we know now from, and the estimate we have on that is, from E3, is up to $5 million a year additional cost to us. From looking at the load data, it looks like that estimate was conservative. You know, if we look at our, sorry, a lot of this is in the weeds, but if we look at our load profile, you see, you know, a load forecast for us that comes off of a multi-year, you know, 3.5% decline. And then this year, we see a 7% increase, just this year. And then after that, in our load, we see a 0.3% increase for the 10 years, you know, moving into the future. You know, these are things we should be concerned about. You know, these are large, long-term commitments, and we should be doing, you know, the appropriate planning. And, you know, just to give you some sense of scale on that 7% increase, that 7% increase in our electric demand, you know, that represents, to drive something like that, you know, you need large population influx, you need large industrial client base, you know, things need to change, you know, that structurally in your environment to have, drive that kind of electricity demand. You know, that type of economic and growth demand, you know, rivals, you know, what you would see in the fastest-growing economies in the world. So, you know, of all of this, I can't stress, you know, more how important it is that, you know, we get to industry best practices, we start doing IRPs, and, you know, we require that before we make any more energy purchases. And this is only made more important from, you know, the recent revelations about the potential increases in our transmission costs. And that, you know, again, is something that would have impacted the selection of the resources that we had previously, and the selection of the resources that we have in front of us now.
And I would add that concerning transmission costs, we don't know if we're using some of our own power coming from the SEPA area, if we have an increased transmission cost higher on that one than on transmission from some of our new contacts, Brek, Paducah, Dinerji. So we don't have a feel for that. Some of that risk could have been evaluated with an IRP, an Integrated Resource Plan. That also integrates what our industrial customers and residences are gonna be doing in terms of energy efficiency, or the goal of car manufacturers to reduce dependence on fossil fuels and go to 25% renewable and be able to advertise their cars for that. And we don't have car manufacturing here, but we do have the company's Monoplast that prepares parts or makes parts that are used in those cars. And Monoplast's interest in putting in solar, and that will, could possibly reduce the amount of energy they purchase for us, from us, by four megawatts. And if we had an IRP, we'd have some ideas of trends where people are moving as far as their energy needs, and how much capacity we actually need to buy. So those are things that we've, as Reed Smith pointed out, through E3, we asked for some of these things to be incorporated. And E3 looked at the response that we got and said, there isn't anything here that has changed. There is no agreement to do these things.
And I guess the last comment I had, or one of the last, I'm not sure, comments I had, that came out of a report that Berea commissioned. I guess to give folks some history, Berea City Commission voted in September of last year to cancel all of their contracts with KYMEA. And as a result of that, the mayor hired an attorney and some other resources to evaluate those contracts. And the attorney he hired, Goss Sanford...
Well, I think we're getting into dangerous territory talking about the Goss report, because we're in a special meeting, we can only talk about what's on the agenda, and the Goss report is not on the agenda.
What the agenda included was issues involving KYMEA. And the Goss report is certainly an issue that reflects that.
As it related to the Reed Smith report.
Just that, issues related to KYMEA.
Board discussion of the Reed Smith report and issues of concern involving KYMEA. And the Goss report is a serious concern.
So my concern with the Goss report is, there's a lot of stuff in here that applies specifically to Berea, but there's one component of it that, you know, applies to all of us. And the point that Mr. Goss makes in his report is that it appears to him that KYMEA exceeded the statutory authority in the Interlocal Cooperation Act and potentially isn't a valid agency, and calls into question the validity of the PPAs that are signed. And I guess the questions that I have from that are, you know, you know, what do we do? You know, are there things that we need to be thinking about to correct these deficiencies?
But Walt, if you looked in the appendix that came along with the email from giving us the Goss report, there's a letter there from Charles Musson that explains quite clearly that KYMEA followed the KRS by having the Attorney General approve the agreement. The Attorney General approved the agreement. And so I think that Mr. Goss's analysis of the interlocal agreement being invalid is invalid itself. If the Attorney General thought that the interlocal agreement needed to go to the Department of Local Government instead of the AG's office, he would have said that in his reply to KYEA in his evaluation of the interlocal agreement. He didn't. He approved it on August the 31st of 2015. It was then filed with the Attorney, with the Secretary of State, and with each county clerk, as the KRS says. So I just don't buy the Goss report's analysis of the interlocal agreement not being valid somehow.
So there's two issues that the Goss report points out. One is, as you said, the approval process that needed to go on. And the interlocal agreement requires for municipals to submit their approval through the DLG, and other non-municipal entities can submit, as I understand it, non-municipal entities can submit through the Attorney General. So that's one of the issues that the Goss report pointed out, and you're right, Charlie Musson responded to that. Whether or not that response is valid, I really can't comment on. But the other issue that he pointed out was just simply exceeding the authority that was allowed in the Interlocal Cooperation Agency. It's not about the approval process, it's simply whether or not the Interlocal Cooperation Act allows for municipals to join together to form a new subdivision of the state. And that's his assertion, that it doesn't allow them to even form a new subdivision of the state. He points out that it does allow them, however, to form a corporation. So there were legal ways to do it. Simply exceeded the authority by forming a public agency. It wasn't, yeah. So there's two issues. One, exceeding the authority by forming a public agency, and two, whether or not the approval process is valid. And I would add, not to put, you know, words in James's mouth, but I've spoken with our board attorney, and he, did you want to comment, or would you let me paraphrase, or?
I would just say that the Goss report raises some serious concerns. You've got two attorneys giving you two different opinions, which is not unusual, depending on their belief of the law that applies to the subject. This board, you know, this board can take any action which it deems fit.
And I guess my concern here is that, you know, we get, you know, past whatever's going on with the rate increase, and then we get later into this year, and, you know, a co-op or just whatever other interested party, an IOU, asks the court for a judgment on whether or not it's a valid agency. And if that goes against us, you know, where are we? And are the things we need to be thinking about doing to shore up that eventuality? Because if something like that does happen, and there's a ruling against us, does that half a billion dollars in liability flow down to the municipals? What possibility do we have to deliver that power? You know, I think Mr. Goss is a respected, you know, attorney. Mr. Liebman, you know, concurs with his interpretation of the law around the authority to form a subdivision of the state. You know, I think we need to seriously think about how we protect ourselves from a potential assault on that point. I guess I don't have any action items, but I think it's a serious issue, and we need to consider it.
I guess one comment from the Berea standpoint is that they didn't pursue that question because they're only buying transmission. And if they lose their investment in that, it would be not as costly to them as it would
So I guess to summarize, you know, I think it's really important that, you know, this board soon, you know, directly requests that KYEA, you know, again, doing IRP processes to get, you know, the planning we need there, to give us some comfort in what's going forward. You know, again, at this point, you know, we know we bought too much power, we know we paid too much for that power. The estimates from E3 are, you know, $5 million a year too much for the capacity we're buying, and that we paid $24 million too much for that entire unit. And then we've got whatever, you know, value that's gonna impact us from the FERC decision. We don't, I don't know if we have those numbers for ourselves, but we see from the other municipals, articles in the newspaper, particularly Paducah and the Paducah Sun, where they talk about that impacting them tens of millions of dollars a year. You know, these are all things that prudent planning and industry best practices would have given us a heads up to, and hopefully would help us avoid these excess costs for our customers in the future.
How could we have had any heads up on KU deciding to do the deep-handcaking thing?
The letter they, I don't know how much I can say about it, but the letter they, we've been asked to be secret about it, which I'm not sure I understand since the others are talking about it. But they sent us a letter in 2015. So we've known about it at least that long. And it's my understanding from talking to the other, to the other, some of the other municipals, that they knew it was out there, but didn't know what the reality of it was. And, you know, now we know what the reality of it is. You know, that's one of the things you'll get out of an IRP, is you'll get, you know, risk profiles and cost impacts based on regulatory change and political change. And you at least go into these decisions heads up, knowing which way your costs could get pulled based on various changes in the market and changes in the political climate. And again, you know, IRPs are a standard planning tool. The majority of the states in the United States require them. Kentucky is one of those states that require them. You know, municipals in our state aren't required to fall under the governance of the PSC. However, we do adopt a great deal of the PSC rulemaking inside of our tariff. So it's not a traditional for us to pull that in. And I think also, along with, you know, being a public utility, you know, we have, you know, a huge benefit from, and also a huge responsibility from not being regulated by the PSC. But all of that regulatory onus falls on us as a board.
So, yes, from that, I would add that we are the PSC for the Frankfurt Plant Board. We are the Public Service Commission to be looking out...
I'm sorry, we cannot hear.
We are the Public Service Commission essentially for the Frankfurt Plant Board, and that we are supposed to be looking out for future risk. So it's a serious responsibility. And I guess, kind of in a way, in the discussion that we had briefly concerning the sewer department, and that they didn't work on their infrastructure for many years, and now we're faced with huge costs. And so it's a parallel, that thinking about this in advance avoids future risk and cost. So in a few weeks, in July, I believe the plan is that we'll be asked to agree to a power purchase agreement for solar. And the big question there is, how much do we actually need? And how do we gauge how much we need without an IRP?
And after that, we'll be, we'll have a contract in front of us for a combined-cycle gas plant. And, you know, again, these are even longer commitments, they're 20 years, 30 years. And as we've learned, you know, you know, all of that risk flows back to us. And all the, so all the responsibility for avoiding that risk to our customers falls to us. And I would also note that, you know, one of the primary reasons that was given for our exit from KU was their shift to a 10-year exit clause in their, notice clause in their contract. And apparently, that didn't materialize. The agencies that stayed with KU only have five-year exits, and they actually have slightly better terms, I believe, because they can issue that exit anytime. better terms, I believe, because they can issue that exit anytime. And now we've got, you know, at a minimum, a 10-year commitment to KYMEA. And again, we know we paid too much for that and we bought too much. And now we're talking about, you know, signing up for another 20 years plus, again, without industry best practice planning in there and the ability through that planning process to have some assurance that we are getting the lowest-cost power supply and mitigating the risk to cost to our customers the most.
Well, I'd say that we've covered the discussion. Perhaps board members can think about it, and then we can revisit it in the June board meeting.
I would agree. I think it's important that we think a great deal about the risk that the Goss report points out, and we think about how we can mitigate that risk. And I think it's important that we, you know, start doing what the state rules require. We start doing industry best practices and do integrated resource plans. And we, you know, consider that at our next meeting, we have, you know, some thoughts in mind to address those concerns.
Okay. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is number four. Contact a public meeting regarding the reservoir project to meet Kentucky Division of Water environmental review requirements related to Kentucky Infrastructure Authority financing. And I believe this will be David Billings updating us.
We're here to talk about the reservoir again today. I invited Tom Marshall to stay and view it. He's worried about rates, so I encouraged him to stay and watch. We're having this meeting as part of a KIA funding requirement. We were optimistic that our meeting that we had back in December of 2015 would have substituted for it, but we advertised that like a board meeting, and it should have been advertised a little bit differently. So we're having this again today. So a lot of you have seen some of these slides. I'll try to go quickly through those. There's a few new slides that I want to take a little time to discuss. So on the agenda, we'll talk about the public discussions that we've had on the reservoir, the past considerations, and how we got to where we're at, how replacement was the ultimate solution, the approved design. And what I mean by that is the design that this board has approved, a 7 million gallon tank, and the merits there of that design. New slide, there's been an environmental review done of the project. I want to talk a little bit about the public opposition that we've had about the project, and this new alternative design that the TNA has recommended, and a comparison and summary of the two. So these next two slides are all the public meetings or board meetings that we have had about this project, including the April 2018 KIA board meeting and the April 2018 update to the City Commission. Why are we having all these public meetings? Well, tonight is a requirement, but before this, we recognize this project's visible to the public. We want to communicate the issues with the reservoir, and we also want to demonstrate we've been very transparent in the process. So how did we get to this point? We looked at doing several things. Doing nothing was not an option. It wasn't then, it's even less of one now. We looked at repairing it. It was not cost-effective. We looked at moving it. It was even more expensive. We decided that replacing it in place was the most cost-effective and longest service life. So where are we now? We're wrapping up design. Again, this board approved a 7 million gallon tank now, and another one when needed. We have secured a KIA low-interest loan that will save all of our ratepayers a lot of money. Our documents have been submitted twice to planning and zoning in accordance with Kentucky revised statutes. We have a tentative bid date of November 2018, a tentative construction date of February 2019, and a $4 million budgetary cost. Here's a planned view of the reservoir. The one to your left is the one that we intend to construct first and save room for some point way down in the future for a second tank. Some of the merits of the current design is you can see that the edge of the roof very, is very similar to the edge of the existing roof. There's two and a half feet difference in elevation between the two edge roofs, which is what we think is most visible by the project. Here's a proposed site plan of the project. That's the South Basin first. Some point down the future, the second 7 million gallon tank. Here's a rendering from US 60. The reason that we left it transparent in the renderings is so you could see the outline of the existing tank and use it for reference in the background. There was a comment made that we purposely left it the color of the sky. Well, that would be our intent if we do paint it, would be paint the color of the sky. So there's the rendering with the second future tank. Here's a rendering from Tanglewood Drive. You can see the new cablehead end building, satellite dishes, and the proposed reservoir with the existing reservoir in the background. Here's a rendering from Reservoir Road. So the merits of the current and approved plan, we've had a lot of meetings. This board has approved that 7 million gallon tank. They've approved the design. We've got financing for a 7 million gallon tank. It is the least-cost option by far of anything that we've looked at. It has the long, a very long service life of 50-plus years. That tank design will incorporate the required seismic design that is not inherent to the existing tank design. So when we get done with this project, our community will be safer than it currently is. I think that's a point that a lot of times I fail to bring out. Another merit of the tank design is one 7 million gallon tank meets our projected water demands beyond 2060. It has a smaller footprint than what's up there today, and there are no environmental consequences with this design. I mentioned demand sizing. This black line right here is the capacity of our system without the reservoir. The blue lines going up and down, those are actual two-day rolling average demands of water that we put into the system. The top line, that is the capacity of our system with the existing reservoir. So you can see that we've had capacity sitting up there that's been underutilized for years. So the current design would bring the total system capacity to $13.6 million. There's no magic involved with that. It was finding a tank that fit within the existing footprint that met the needs of our demands in the past. That's how that was derived by. The projection on how long it will last is based on demand. Some people say that this is incorrect. It just depends on what period of data that you look at. Anyway, we expect that this 7 million gallon tank would last for our demand well beyond 2060. I don't plan on being here by then. So I touched on some of this earlier. One of the merits is the proposed footprint fits inside of the existing footprint. I took the liberty of outlining in purple the existing footprint of the basin. You can see that the red circles are significantly smaller footprint than what's up there today. Even the roof, the roof, the drip line of the roof, if you compare just the drip line of the roof, the drip line of the new reservoirs are 22% less than the drip line of the existing. We had a public hearing on rates tonight. This is basically what we approved right here on the public hearing. We have in place already a plan to raise those rates for the next, for two more years to pay for that reservoir in part. So at the year of FY '21, we plan on a 4,000-gallon water customer to be paying $35 a month. Right now, they're paying $31.20. So including in those rates is the revenue requirements to pay for the debt service. As part of the KIA process, we've had to undergo an environmental review. We get letters or statements from multiple state and federal agencies. That is, that includes, but not limited to, Department for Local Government, the Division of Water, Environmental Protection, US Fish and Wildlife, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the USDA. Every agency, every single solitary agency, provided no objections, no comments, or recommended no adverse or significant impacts. Therefore, as I understand this process, we are not required to do any kind of environmental remediation as part of this project because it's federally funded. Now, we have had some limited public opposition. At the City Commission, we gave an update, and TNA's representation was there, and they showed up with renderings of two 4.6 million gallon tanks with a flat roof. So I take it that TNA desires us to replace the existing tanks with two 4.6 million gallon tanks with flat roof. That's my impression of what they asked for. Excuse me. So why shouldn't we build two 4.6 million gallon tanks with a flat roof? There's a significant increase in initial construction cost. There's no allowance for future expansion with that design. And when there comes a time way down the road that you do need extra storage, there's significantly higher costs associated with that because you've got to put it somewhere else. That site up there is a two-tank site. If you occupy both tank sites now, you have to go somewhere else in the future. And with that design, you would also have increased long-term maintenance costs. Alan can tell you that a lot of our maintenance costs in the past have been associated with those flat roofs. Is I not correct, Alan? Okay. So let's talk about the costs between the two designs. The current design approved by the board, 7 million gallon tank with a 1/10 dome. $3.8 million, that's our estimated construction cost. Okay? On a cost-per-gallon basis, we're talking about being able to put a gallon of storage at the elevation that we need it for $0.54 a gallon. That's a deal because of the elevation that the site provides. And what TNA has alluded to is two 4.6 million gallon tanks with a flat roof with an estimated cost of $9.9 million. We would have to borrow that money. So that was the additional, near-term cost I was talking about, but looking at it on a cost-per-gallon basis. So what the board has approved is half of what the Neighborhood Association has requested. That's one 7 now, and even another 7 at some point in the future, assuming the same construction cost. We can still put it on a $0.54 cost-per-gallon basis. So we're being asked to spend twice as much money and have to relocate somewhere else in the future. Our near-term rate impact. I shared with everybody what we thought our residential city rate was going to be in FY ' '21. That's the $34.92. If we have to borrow the additional money to do the two 4.6s with the flat roof, that would increase to $36.46. That's for every residential city customer. Residential county would go from $36.36, which we plan to be, to $37.96. That is just to pay for the additional principal and interest for the additional capital borrowing. Here's a commercial. All your Super Americas, things of that nature, they're going to have to pay more for water. They typically use, I think it's 30,000 gallons of water. We planned on being $162.80 a month with them. Their rate would go to $169.96 a month. So what are the long-term costs? I mentioned that the reservoir site has a two-tank capacity. Building two tanks now requires additional future somewhere else. Those suitable locations, given us the elevation that we need, are very limited and costly. We looked at this years ago, and then the board wanted us to get it reevaluated in 2017. So we had it reevaluated in 2017. We went back and looked at the same areas. Behind Franklin Square costs an additional $10.5 million. That's just for infrastructure, folks. The other site that we looked at was next to AT&amp;T cell tower side off of Sour Boulevard. $7.1 million just to put the tank there. And then we looked at the Berry Hill Golf Course area, which is right across the road. That was even $2 million. And since that time, the Parks and Rec Board has voted unanimously not to utilize Berry Hill or the Golf Course area for any capacity. These costs do not include the tanks. That's just infrastructure and land to get it there. So let's talk about advantages and disadvantages between what this board has approved and the two-tank design that's been recommended. Single 7 million gallon tank has the least-cost alternative, shortest construction duration, and the least-cost future capacity. Disadvantages are perceived aesthetics. Those are my words, perceived aesthetics. Has a higher dome in the middle and has more exposure on the south side. Let's look at the advantages of the suggested design. Our, again, perceived aesthetics. I think the thought there was to mimic what was there existing. It has a flat roof, so that's a perceived aesthetic. It's very similar to the existing tanks. Again, disadvantages, two 4.6s. Higher construction cost, $6.1 million more this board's going to have to borrow to fund the construction. Higher rates, 4.4% than what we've already planned. Taller sidewall height. I wanted to touch on this. I talked about it earlier. The sidewall height is the height of the vertical wall. If we go with two 4.6s with the flat roof, that sidewall height with that design will have to be two and a half feet taller than the current design. Have a longer construction duration with the two-tank option. You have additional cost for redesign. Significant future capacity costs putting that storage somewhere else. So in summary, the single 7 million gallon tank is the least-cost alternative, least-rate impact today. We've already planned for it, and it's already incorporated into our plan to raise rates It meets the needs of our capacity well into the future. It's significantly smallest rate impact for future storage needs. It's the most responsible, I think, to all of our ratepayers. And it is approved for SRF low-interest loan, which will save us probably $800,000 over the life of the loan. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, David. I think you made it interesting and informative. Oh, we do have a question.
David, just as a clarification, when you're talking about those rates, again, you're talking about 4,000 gallons.
Yes. Let me go back. Oops. I don't know what I did. Where was it at? Right there. That is the monthly typical cost for a 4,000-gallon residential residential user. I've got city, let me use it. That's city, county residential, both of those are 4,000 gallons, and the commercial user, which is 30,000 gallons. We don't make, Tom, we don't make any distinction between city and county, commercial or industrial.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you, David. I think you made it informative and interesting. So we'll now go on to the item everyone's looking forward to, our last item. Selection of the general manager's search firm. And our attorney, James Liebman, will give us a report on that. He tallied the votes by the board members on the selection of the firm.
We sent out an RFP asking to get responses from executive services to assist us and assist the board in hiring a new general manager. We got three valid responses. All of those responses were submitted to the board members. Each of the board members individually scored the responses and submitted that information to me. I put those numbers together. I did it twice. I did it twice, one once with the cost factor included and once with the cost factor excluded. But you get the same result. John Tedesco and Associates is the highest-ranking proposal from what was submitted. Praying Associates is second, and Sky Solutions is third. Up to the board as to what action they wish to take.
So we have a properly responded to request for proposals. We have a selection. Do we have a motion to move ahead?
I move the award of bid for the GM selection to Tedesco and Associates per the board's recommendation.
I have a comment, a question.
Okay, good.
Couple of things. As it relates to the selected firm, I don't know if it's possible, but I'd like for the plant board to be able to control some of the expenses of the consultants, such as maybe the plant board schedules the flights, reserves the hotel rooms. Because when it's not your money, you can reserve a flight, book a flight at the last moment. You can stay in the best hotel. You can eat from the best restaurant. I know a lot of, somebody, they may balk a little bit about that, but I think that needs to be put up. Secondly, I think that the administration of this contract should be done by the Frankfurt Plant Board staff, not James. We have a valid, a professional HR person in Ms. Snyder. She's able to, she's done it in the past, I'm sure. She's able to do the administration on this. She knows where to bill it to and it gives David, Katrina's department, access to billing. They have validation for the bills. And it just makes it a smoother process. There's no need of us duplicating a system that's already in place in the plant board. So whomever it might be, and if it's this person, my recommendation, I'd like the minute to say that the plant board staff, management, the staff will administer this process.
Actually, I agree. I think, I guess, one maybe point of discussion is it might be more efficient if we just provide our travel and expense policy to the search firm and ask them to, and that way they can book their flights.
Yeah, as part of the negotiation, as part, you know, if that's, yeah. But I've experienced where consultants can book late, eat great, and...
And I also agree that Diane should manage the engagement. I would like to see, you know, all the board copied on all the comms so we see all communications and know what's going on, any tours that go on, the boards involved with some members.
I think that, you're right. I think the board should be intimately involved in it. I just think the administration of the process, I mean, it can flow through the FPB management. Now, you know, it's kind of like a beauty contest. The sealed envelope comes from the CPA too. So that sealed envelope and all those kind of things can come to us. But the conduit is Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, I agree. I just like to highlight that, like, make sure the board's copied on all communications.
Yeah, I agree, totally.
So I did talk to Diane and she is definitely willing and capable of handling this. And also, I should mention, I did talk to John Tedesco when he submitted the proposal. And he mentioned that he grew up in southern Indiana and spent quite a bit of time here in Kentucky. So he has a perspective of being not exactly a resident, but having some commitment to the community.
Well, sorry if I'm not feeling good, warm and fuzzy with that because it's business.
Well, it is business, but I just wanted to add that, that that was one of the comments that he made to me. And I would think he'd be sensitive to those concerns you had about spending money.
Let's restate the motion so we're clear as to what's being proposed.
I've got to get rid of it.
Before you do that, can you include a max for procurement purposes? What is the board accept as far as cost of the search firm as well?
Do we, hmm?
Can the motion be something to the effect that we accept Tedesco or whatever the name, subject to successful negotiations with the firm?
That be an appropriate motion?
You're authorizing Mr. Liebman to make the negotiations with that firm?
Well, I think we just said staff was going to do it.
Okay, got you, got you. Just making sure I was clear with that.
Unless you feel obligated.
I guess the only thing we might think about is we want to set a cap so that it can be negotiated up to, so we don't have to have another meeting to approve the spending.
Just make sure they don't watch the meeting coverage.
Oh, there is the thing.
Well, okay. I'm not sure how to answer that question.
Yeah.
That could be, the motion could include that as part of the negotiation. The motion can just be that award the contract contingent on...
Contingent on negotiation of final...
Successful negotiations with Tedesco.
Well, I'll take a stab at restating the motion. So I move that we award the contract for the GM search process to Tedesco and Associates for an amount pending a successful negotiation. The engagement to be managed by Diane Snyder and all board members to be copied on all communications.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, one extension carried by four board members. Do we have a motion to, or any other, motion to...
So moved. Adjourned.
Okay, motion to adjourn. And a second. Right, we can't.
All in favor?
All in favor? Um, yes, I made the motion, actually, and Walt seconded it. And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.